I know. Come on, guys. We only have seven of us here. We need three more for a quorum. It's 10:17. We could use... Can we get Hernandez? Hernandez is here. All right, we have eight. Two more for a quorum. Last one in is a rotten egg. Come on, let's go. Does anybody still remember that expression?
Yeah.
We're dating ourselves. Three, six, eight. And we got you. Mr. Burnson. Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Holden. There's nine. Okay, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Ridley Thomas. I know Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building. I was with him half an hour ago. Are you ready? All right, let's go. Find a seat. Hold on tight. Here we go. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. See, that's how you know we're ready to start. Do it again, Ron. It's still a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, February 28, 2001. The council meets on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. I'm going to stop saying at 10 o'clock. Somewhere between 10:15 and 10:30. It is now 10:20. We are being viewed on Channel 35. We're available by council phone, and we are about to start the meeting. Please call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fiergo, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Wachs, Walters, Ferraro. Ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Next item is commensary resolutions for approval.
And those are also approved. Unanimous vote.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is an item to continue. Item number one, the applicant request continues to March 28.
All right. Everybody caught up on that? Item one will be continued to March 28. Four weeks.
Next item, Madam President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items two through seven. Item number two has an ordinance, and 12 council members are expected today.
All right, let's hold item two on the desk. We have a card on item four, but we've already held public hearings on two through seven. Actually, let's do them all, and then when somebody shows up, we'll revote the ordinance. Any specials, members of the council, two through seven? No specials. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, those are approved. And the ordinance, we're going to hold on the desk until we have 12. And item two, which brings us to...
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eight through 21.
All right, we... Do we have any? Which one do you have cards on there?
Eighteen and fifteen.
All right, we have cards on eighteen and fifteen, so we'll call those special. Any other specials? Eight through 21. Ms. Chick calls item 20 special. Anybody else? All right, open the roll on items... Well, eight is an ordinance. We're not up to 12 yet, are we? Three, six, no. So let's hold eight, and we'll open the roll on nine through 14, 16, 17, 19, and 21. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved.
Next item, Madam President. The closed sessions, do you wish to hold those?
Yes, let's hold those.
On the continued agenda, item number 23 is a continued motion.
All right, item 23. We all... I don't know if we all saw it, but you can make your report, and that may take care of this. Mr. Carey.
I have the affidavit from Senator Polanco. His name will be removed from the ballot, and this should be the end of the exercise.
So...
At least for CD1.
Ever the optimist, huh?
Ever the optimist.
All right, in that case, I believe the appropriate action would be to receive and file item number 23 in view of the fact that the issue has been dealt with. All right, open the roll on receive and file. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator Polanco. Let us move to the next item.
Item number 15 was called special. There are cards from the public on the item, and there's also a substitute motion.
All right, item number 15. We will hear from Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. Now, doing a lot of double duty this morning, doing all kinds of radio shows back east, plus I'm here, defending the honor of the LAPD against Jessica Hahn's paranoia. Anyway, today I want to talk... What is this? Consideration of a motion relative to community redevelopment. Every time I see CRA, I get worried. Every time I see CRA, I get worried. A conveyance of the Ziegler Estate property to Community Development Department. It's $65,000 for a startup cost to obtain a license for a preschool and a childcare center. Well, there are a lot of homeless people in the city of LA that would like some help, that would like homes. Why are you doing this? Anybody have any comment? You may just vote 12 aye. You know, you want to go to lunch. You want to run for office because of term limits. But this is something I want to know. It's like inquiring minds want to know. I'd like to know. Maybe the person that sponsors this wants to talk about it. Why are you doing this? Tell me why. Why not anybody else? Why this preschool? Why the Ziegler Estate? Who are they funding? Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Hernandez.
Yep. Members of the council, the Ziegler House has been before you on several occasions. It's a historic home in Highland Park that basically has been converted and preserved and renovated for purposes of a childcare center. The motion before you today is asking CRA to convene the property over to the Community Development Department so that then they could have a local community-based organization serve as the childcare provider. Now, part of the problem that we've had in this process has been it's taken quite a while for the Ziegler House to be made ready for purposes of childcare and the preservation of the building. It's right next to the Mount Washington proposed light rail station or the Southwest Museum, right across the street from the Ramona Parlor where we had our city council meeting. In order for the childcare provider to be certified at the site, they need to purchase equipment and go through certain processes. Because of when the Ziegler House will be ready to be taken over and them having to go through a certification process is the reason we're putting up $65,000 so that they could go through that process over a three-month period. I think at the same time, they'll be receiving a grant from the county for about the same amount of money, and then hopefully we can get them into a funding cycle so that they could participate with state slots as well as county slots for childcare. So I just ask that we approve the substitute motion that clarified some of the language according to the lease provisions and move on and provide this childcare service for the children of Highland Park.
All right, I think we're ready to do that. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That brings us to item 18.
Madam President, there are 12 members present. Now, do you wish to take up the ordinances on items two and eight?
Yes, let's go back to items two and eight. Members of the council, we are about to vote on item two and item eight. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, those are approved. Now, we're up to item 18. Okay, item 18. Guess who? Melrose Larry Green.
Hi, I'm Melrose Larry Green. I must add, I'm getting inundated by these commercials on TV for mayoral candidates. I wish for every TV commercial these fellows ran, they'd come attend a city council meeting. Right, Mr. Wachs? And the rest of you? Anyway, item 18. You're also running for something. Quiet. Now, item number 18. Isn't term limits great? I call it musical chairs instead of term limits. It's like, you know, you have two terms, then run for something else. Okay, now, item number 18 is relative to a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for the murder of Paul David Mitchell. Now, of course, I agree with this. On November 22, 2000, that's months ago. What's today? February 28? Takes two months to have December... Three months to put this on the agenda. I talked to you yesterday about the woman that was carjacked, possibly molested before she was killed, a 23-year-old graduate of USC, innocent victim last Friday right in Los Angeles. So I hope that you will also, name was Miss Happy, I hope you will also put a $25,000 reward out. This is certainly money I think is much more better spent than the last thing I talked about, because I think without... If we're going to have carjackings, you know, we're really going to have a bad image for the city. And I felt so mortified when I read about this case. Terrible. And I think the city council, if you put out that money, whoever did this crime, we need to apprehend these criminals and get them off the streets. I'm Melrose Larry Green. I know you have a lot of things on your plate, and I'm just one person. I'm not a lobbyist. I don't have a lot of clout behind me, but I'm a very sensitive, compassionate person, and I know that you, the city council, some of you think I'm a nut, and some of you think I'm brilliant. I'm somewhere as in between. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Item 18 is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that's approved. Do we need fourth with on that one?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item, item 20, called special by Ms. Chick.
Madam President and colleagues, I introduce the motion that's before us today because it was brought to my attention during a governmental efficiency committee meeting that the city very well might be missing out on property tax revenue, and particularly our community redevelopment agency might be missing out in collecting our fair share of property tax revenue. If a parcel of land is not correctly identified by the county as part of a CRA redevelopment area, then the city is turning over valuable tax increment to the county that could assist us in our redevelopment efforts. I'm absolutely convinced that we can do a better job in assessing whether property in the city is correctly identified through a parcel-by-parcel audit. And in fact, in past years, not so long ago, the city comptroller's office, in fact...
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Next item is commensary resolutions for approval.
And those are also approved, unanimous vote.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's an item to continue. Item number one, the applicant request continues to March 28th.
All right, everybody caught up on that? Item one will be continued to March 28th, four weeks.
Next item, Madam President, items for which public hearings have been held, items two through seven. Item number two has an ordinance and council, 12 council members are expected today.
All right, let's hold item two on the desk. We have a card on item four, but we've already held public hearings on two through seven. Actually, let's do them all, and then when somebody shows up, we'll revote the ordinance. Any specials, members of the council, two through seven? No specials. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, those are approved. And the ordinance, we're going to hold on the desk until we have 12 in item two. Which brings us to...
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eight through 21.
All right, we, do we have any? Which one do you have cards on there?
Eighteen and fifteen.
All right, we have cards on eighteen and fifteen, so we'll call those special. Any other specials? Eight through 21. Ms. Chick calls item 20 special. Anybody else? All right, open the roll on items, well, eight is an ordinance. We're not up to 12 yet, only three, six, no. So let's hold eight, and we'll open the roll on nine through 14, 16, 17, 19, and 21. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next item, Madam President, the closed sessions, do you wish to hold those?
Yes, let's hold those.
On the continued agenda, item number 23 is a continued motion.
All right, item 23, we all, I don't know if we all saw it, but you can make your report, and that may take care of this. Mr. Carey.
I have the affidavit from Senator Palanco. His name will be removed from the ballot, and this should be the end of the exercise.
So...
At least for CD1.
(laughing) Ever the optimist, huh?
Ever the optimist.
All right, in that case, I believe the appropriate action would be to receive and file item number 23 in view of the fact that the issue has been dealt with. All right, open the roll on receive and file, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator Palanco. Let us move to the next item.
Item number 15 was called special. There are cards from the public on the item, and there's also a substitute motion.
All right, item number 15, we will hear from Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. Now, doing a lot of double duty this morning, doing all kinds of radio shows back east, plus I'm here, defending the honor of the LAPD against Jessica Hahn's paranoia. Anyway, today I want to talk, what is this? Consideration of a motion relative to community redevelopment. Every time I see CRA, I get worried. Every time I see CRA, I get worried. A conveyance of the Ziegler Estate property to Community Development Department. It's $65,000 for a startup costs to obtain a license for a preschool and a childcare center. Well, there are a lot of homeless people in the city of LA that would like some help, that would like homes. Why are you doing this? Anybody have any comment? You may just vote 12 aye, you know, you want to go to lunch, you want to run for office because of term limits, but this is something I want to know. It's like inquiring minds want to know. I'd like to know. Maybe the person that sponsors this wants to talk about it. Why are you doing this? Tell me why. Why not anybody else? Why this preschool? Why the Ziegler Estate? Who are they funding? Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Hernandez.
Yep, members of the council, the Ziegler House has been before you on several occasions. It's a historic home in Highland Park that basically has been converted and preserved and renovated for purposes of a childcare center. The motion before you today is asking CRA to convene the property over to the Community Development Department so that then they could have a local community-based organization serve as the childcare provider. Now, part of the problem that we've had in this process has been, it's taken quite a while for the Ziegler House to be made ready for purposes of childcare and the preservation of the building. It's right next to the Mount Washington proposed light rail station or the Southwest Museum, right across the street from the Ramona Parlor where we had our city council meeting. In order for the childcare provider to be certified at the site, they need to purchase equipment and go through certain processes. Because of when the Ziegler House will be ready to be taken over, and they having to go through a certification process is the reason we're putting up $65,000 so that they could go through that process over a three-month period. I think at the same time, they'll be receiving a grant from the county for about the same amount of money, and then hopefully we can get them into a funding cycle so that they could participate with state slots as well as county slots for childcare. So I just ask that we approve the substitute motion that clarified some of the language according to the lease provisions, and move on and provide this childcare service for the children of Highland Park.
All right, I think we're ready to do that. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved, forthwith on that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That brings us to item 18.
Madam President, there are 12 members present. Now, do you wish to take up the ordinances on items two and eight?
Yes, let's go back to items two and eight. Members of the council, we are about to vote on item two and item eight. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Now we're up to item 18. Okay, item 18, guess who? Melrose Larry Green.
Hi, I'm Melrose Larry Green. I must add, I'm getting inundated by these commercials on TV for mayoral candidates. I wish for every TV commercial these fellows ran, they'd come attend a city council meeting. Right, Mr. Wax, and the rest of you? Anyway, item 18. You're also running for something. Quiet. Now, item number 18, isn't term limits great? I call it musical chairs instead of term limits. It's like, you know, you have two terms, then run for something else. Okay, now, item number 18 is relative to a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for the murder of Paul David Mitchell. Now, of course, I agree with this. On November 22nd, 2000, that's months ago, what's today, February 28th? Takes two months to have December, three months to put this on the agenda? I talked to you yesterday about the woman that was carjacked, possibly molested before she was killed, a 23-year-old graduate of USC, innocent victim last Friday, right in Los Angeles. So I hope that you will also, name was Miss Happy, I hope you will also put a $25,000 reward out. This is certainly money I think is much more better spent than the last thing I talked about, because I think without, if we're going to have carjackings, you know, we're really going to have a bad image for the city. And I felt so mortified when I read about this case, terrible. And I think the city council, if you put out that money, whoever did this crime, we need to apprehend these criminals and get them off the streets. I'm Melrose Larry Green. I know you have a lot of things on your plate, and I'm just one person. I'm not a lobbyist. I don't have a lot of clout behind me, but I'm a very sensitive, compassionate person, and I know that you, the city council, some of you think I'm a nut, and some of you think I'm brilliant. I'm somewhere as in between. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Item 18 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that's approved. Do we need forthwith on that one? Next item, item 20, called special by Ms. Chick.
Madam President and colleagues, I introduce the motion that's before us today because it was brought to my attention during a governmental efficiency committee meeting that the city very well might be missing out on property tax revenue, and particularly, our Community Redevelopment Agency might be missing out in collecting our fair share of property tax revenue. If a parcel of land is not correctly identified by the county as part of a CRA redevelopment area, then the city is turning over valuable tax increment to the county that could assist us in our redevelopment efforts. I'm absolutely convinced that we can do a better job in assessing whether property in the city is correctly identified through a parcel-by-parcel audit. And in fact, in past years, not so long ago, the city controller's office in fact did discover that the CRA was missing out on hundreds of thousands of dollars from the county. We've also had experience discovering that we were missing out in the county giving us our fair share of some court fees, and the back dollars on that alone came to $800,000 a few years ago. So through this motion, I'm asking for OARS to work with the controller and the CRA to perform this audit with due speed and determine whether we are in fact, through administrative errors, losing valuable revenue. I especially feel strongly about this because I think the CRA is facing a number of challenges in doing the job it needs to do in our project areas. They have often said that they don't have sufficient dollars with which to do it. This could be a source of additional funds so that they can improve the job that they're doing for us now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I saw Mr. Fujioka was here and Mr. Deaton. Mr. Fujioka, I just wanted to ask some questions in regards to this item, in regards to the audit, because, one, I want to commend Councilmember Chick for, again, bringing this issue to our attention, but we've gone through this process before, and normally, we bring in some kind of a consulting firm that basically conducts the audit, determines how much money is potentially out there, and then we go through the process of collecting it, because we've done this before. And part of what's bothersome to me is that we always have to redo it. And in this case, we're specifically looking at CRA areas, but there are also non-CRA areas where property assessments have increased because of development, and we might not be getting our fair share of funding. And so, having an ongoing process of that review, I think is part of a solution. And I just wondered, what would be the next step? Because you're going to come back April 30th, and at that time, are you going to recommend us hiring a consultant to do this work for us, and then going from there? Because I'm just thinking, maybe we could skip a step, because we know it's a reality that happens anyway.
The agency, CRA, has a number of financial, I think we should just go straight to the audit. They have a number of financial consultants currently on contract that we could use to initiate this audit, so we can, with your approval, just go straight to the audit using those consultants. And they had to wear without to do so.
Yeah, and that would be my friendly amendment to the motion introduced.
I don't think it's an amendment, actually. It was my intention. It directs OARS, Controller, Community Redevelopment Agency to do the audit. I didn't want an outside contractor.
Okay, so then we won't have to bring in any kind of motions or anything to use those other...
No, I think that in this case, if OARS or CRA needs an outside contractor, they can hire. I think this gives authorization to do that with this action.
And what about...
If they need that, or they can do it by themselves, they can do it by themselves.
And what about the other potential areas where we might shortchange the city's revenue flow that should be coming from the county because of reassessment of property values? And, see, the county, I was always confused as to how that happens, but the county goes through a reassessment, collects taxes, and then the city has to ask for its fair share of its taxes. And in that process, we also found shortages, and I'm just trying to bring that up because we should be conducting the same kind of audits on an ongoing basis. And we've had a tremendous amount of development going on in the city, not just in CRA areas, particularly in the area of market rate housing and so forth, so I just wanted to...
Why don't we, we'll proceed with this one, and then we'll, if, depending on what we find in this one, we will come back and maybe suggest doing a broader one for the rest of the city.
Okay.
Yep, well, I want to thank my colleague for making his points, because if we're seeing that we're missing these dollars on a regular basis, is there a lesson to be learned? I mean, are we, is there something that we should be doing differently to make sure that we're getting our fair share and not having to go backwards and hire outside contractors and auditors? In fact, it was a consultant from the private sector who gave testimony at the Governmental Efficiency Committee that opened the door for me to have this idea to begin with. That consultant said he had gone to the CRA, pointed out to them that he felt convinced and showed them testimony that they were missing out on some of these dollars. In committee, he said, they weren't interested. They said, we have people who do this, we don't need your help. This isn't about any one particular consultant, it's not even about wanting to hire a consultant, but it is about wanting to see, is the county repeating certain mistakes, or are we making, you know, doing things in a way that could be corrected so that we do get the right amount of dollars year after year after year? Lessons learned, are there any from the past?
I think we'd be well advised to, on a periodic basis, to review what the county sends us, because of the assessment process. It's coming forward, and it's, I think it's just the basic audit that should be conducted on an ongoing basis.
Well...
And we've done that historically, the clerk has done that with sales tax at the state level, and I don't think it's about, property tax allocation is an extremely complex process.
Right.
And it's one that I don't believe, that the county is purposely doing...
No.
Any allocation in a fashion, but it's one that on a regular basis that we should monitor as well as they should, and we should do the same for sales tax.
And I, I mean, from the example of the court fees as well, maybe any significant dollars that we are getting through another governmental agency, merits are taking a regular look to make sure, never accusing them of doing it intentionally, but that, you know, that we want to get, I mean, to me, this is where our fair share really applies.
A due diligence is appropriate.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Let's, let us open the roll on item 20, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Now, here's what we're going to do for the rest of the agenda. We have a special number one, which we're going to take first, then we're going to recess the regular meeting and take up our two-item special meeting, then we'll close that and come back and do the closed session items from the regular meeting, and on the way to the closed session, we will have public comment. So the next item is special number one. Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, February 23rd, Councilmember Mizakowski introduced a motion requesting the approval of a grant application to the California Office of Criminal Justice Planning. Just this morning, she was notified by the mayor's office that in order to get this grant through, it would need to be approved by today. It's actually on the March 2nd agenda, so therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
All right, do you want to talk to the findings, or shall we have, let's vote on the findings?
The findings are just a date. The deadline to submit in Sacramento is today.
Okay, so let's first open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now the matter's before us. Cindy, you're on.
Yes, this is just to authorize the application for a grant, which we will expect to get over $2 million for the Office of Criminal Justice Planning, to go to programs that we have already approved and sanctioned and just need continuity with. And as I said, we just learned that the deadline for submission is today. We need to act today to make sure that the application is processed so we can receive the funds.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, as I did second the motion, I simply rise to make an amendment, which is to have this returned to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Juvenile Justice once it's been properly processed and acknowledged by the granting authority.
All right, but you are in favor of adopting the motion today?
Pursuant to my second, yes.
Just checking. Okay, open the roll on special one, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that one. We're now going to recess the regular meeting.
Amendment?
As, yes, as amended, sorry. And call to order the special meeting. Madam Clerk?
Bernson Chick, Fierka Lancher, Hernandez Holden, Mizakowski, Pacheco Bidiere, Lee Thomas, Wannich, Wax, Walters, Ferro, 12 members present, inform Madam President.
Thank you. First item, everybody got this agenda? Item one.
Item one is a communication from General Services. CENR and ITGS committees both waived this matter.
Ms. Chick.
Yes, I would like whichever relevant staff to come to the table and explain to us why this very important, needed, and good program and common sense program that is especially relevant in today with the energy crisis facing the state and the region, why, starting with a motion in August of 95 that started this process, why it has taken almost six years to come before us? And I'm not sure the gentlemen at the table are the ones to explain that. I asked the question yesterday and got a two-and-a-half-page record of what's happened with this in terms of committee recommendations, and it certainly seems that quite a long time ago, things were recommended. So if you can answer the question, fine, otherwise, I'd like CLA and maybe city clerk to come up and actually go over this with us, because I think it's, it's one of those histories of good ideas that have taken way too long, that I think we need to pay attention to in terms of process.
Then, gentlemen, anybody want to, Laura, maybe you should save the question again, so we can focus their attention.
The question is, in August of 95, there was a council motion introduced to hire an outside firm to perform an energy audit of city facilities that started this process about energy conservation.
Actually, I can answer part of the question for you in terms of why it took so long.
Yeah, why it took six years, almost.
Well, initially, there was a proposal to hire, we had an RFP, and we had companies bidding for the right to come in and do this. We showed this to DWP, and they got a little nervous about the fact that we were hiring other energy companies, so we put DWP into the equation, and it took a while for them to work with everybody else. Now, I agree with you, it took way too long, but that is part of the reason that it got slowed down. Anybody else want to add to that?
Maria Cardenas with OARS. In 1996 and 1997, GSD undertook a pilot program to retrofit city facilities. They retrofitted 17 facilities. That was with the use of general funds. This now provides the opportunity to retrofit many more facilities using a $10 million loan from DWP. And that happened between 1995 and now. Councilmember Chick.
So we knew it was a good idea, it was working.
It was considered as part of the budget several years. There were tight budget years, there wasn't the funds to set aside general funds to do this. At that point, DWP stepped forward and was able to make the offer of a $10 million loan program.
Okay, because one thing I do want to read is that the Governmental Efficiency Committee at its meeting of January 24th, 2000, recommended approval of the CAO report, and we recommended the execution of a memorandum of understanding and a master loan agreement, and requested that the CAO, the CLA, Department of Water and Power, Department of General Services work out the details of the loan payment methodology. That was a year and three months ago. So for a year and three months, we've been working out the details of the loan repayment methodology?
Don't all rush to respond to that at once.
Don Cunningham with the Department of Water and Power. For much of that time, we have been working out a lot of the details of the loan repayment. We've been able to incorporate some of the newer programs into the loan agreement, including the photovoltaics program as part of the mechanism for repayment. There have also been a lot of details to be worked out in terms of project management and scheduling of the projects, and those are the activities that OARS, DWP, and General Services have been engaged in to bring the final MOU to you today.
I just think it's a shame that within our own city family, and a good idea that everybody has agreed is a good idea, and now it's a crisis-good idea, that it's taken a year and three months to work out details of a good idea. Well, six years from when the good idea was first proposed, and a year and three months since a council committee said to departments, go for it.
Yeah, but that's all true. I mean, and actually, there's lots more to the story that we don't really want to go over in great detail in public, but we do have the opportunity to, because some of those people aren't here anymore, we do have an opportunity to move forward with it. So let me, unless, Mr. Deaton, did you have something in particular you wanted to have? Two more people who want to talk.
Just that, two things. One is that we did do, with general fund monies, we have gone and done some energy efficiency issues. We have also worked out with the new city hall, returning to city hall, although this memorandum of understanding is required to implement, we have worked out several energy-related things that we already have in place and will be moving forward with because of water and power, those expenditures. And granted, it takes, it's taken a long time to negotiate, there's nothing like an inter-family discussion to take a little longer than otherwise would be the case, but it hasn't been entirely, we have been making progress. There are several things that we are doing in city hall that we will be happy to let Water and Power loan us the money to do.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, I also know that in those last six years, we were dealing with the issue of deregulation, downsizing DWP, trying to eliminate debt for DWP. A lot of activity was happening with DWP that was separate from the city of Los Angeles, and I think that for some reason, the charter separates the authority from the city, and the authority operates pretty much independent of the city. And I want to kind of bring that point up because we are also one of DWP's largest customers. And today, you can offer us energy cheaper than some other companies, but there was a time when other companies were very competitive for this business. And I think that, again, that's when we have to talk about being part of the family. One of my concerns, because we're going through this process of retrofitting, and we're dealing with concepts of green energy and so forth, what's happened, how does the city work with our other departments in terms of the Department of Water and Power's energy conservation program? In terms of the Department of Water and Power's green program, green energy program? And when I say that, is we're building more libraries now than we have a long time, we're building more rec centers, we're building childcare centers. Is there an interaction there between the Department of Water and Power and what I believe to be one of your larger companies, the city of Los Angeles, as we're doing these capital projects for purposes of planning, and including at the beginning, energy-efficient systems in the development of those construction projects?
Absolutely, Mr. Hernandez. DWP is actively involved with the city in the design of new city facilities, specifically the libraries, to take advantage of the new construction to be able to incorporate this more advanced energy efficiency technology into the original construction. You're absolutely correct, it's much more effective to do it when you're building the building. And in a number of those projects, my technical staff is a part of the design team and consults with the design team when they're talking about the building systems such as air conditioning and lighting, to make sure that the city gets the most efficient systems available. The city also is able to use the incentives that DWP has available to help provide actual cash to offset the added incremental cost of those more efficient pieces of equipment.
All right, and, Madam President, members of the council, I need to say this publicly because I'm currently involved in the construction of a light rail system, and we've been trying to get the department to work with us closer, and I'll be meeting with Frank Solis and some folks. I really have not seen the kind of effort I expect from the Department of Water and Power in regards to infrastructure decisions, in regards to capital projects, understanding that in the long term, it, basically, it pays for itself. What I do see is an attitude that says, you should pay for it. And I don't see it from management staff, but I see it from staff. I'm trying to explain the difference. Management staff says exactly what you just said. It's when we get down to doing the work that that's not being... It's when we get down to doing the work that that's not being conveyed. When I talk to the library department, and I talk to the Department of Rec and Parks, and I ask the questions, they give me a different answer. And so I'm explaining it to you, because that's what we're getting, we're getting different answers. And I think that's part of why we got caught in the situation of having to retrofit so many buildings, when we've always had the Department of Water and Power as we were developing these buildings.
I don't know if you really want to respond to that, you just want to hear that. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, to Ms. Chick's persistent query, I think it is appropriately indicated that the departments, as often, they have often been under a different direction. This is no exception. The mayors had different priorities, and people have been obliged, to put it mildly, to follow that, and therefore, we have expectations that go unfulfilled irrespective of our policy mandates. Madam President, I think that's a reasonable explanation, and as polite as you wish for me to be.
You get more subtle every day.
Yes, I'm working on this thing. More to come. The other thing that I want to say...
You only have 123 days to do it.
Well, one glad morning. Madam President, I needn't be encouraged. I do want to take note of the fact that, all that notwithstanding, it is to be noted and celebrated, as was done earlier, but this is a significant step forward, and the departments who are involved, now that they have arrived at this point, should be commended. And, Madam President, your leadership in this connection, as well, is well documented and ought to be acknowledged appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Savornich. Mr. Savornich?
On behalf of Mr. Savornich, remove the previous question.
In that case, we'll move along to Mr. Holden.
This is all about energy and the energy crisis, or we needn't be here discussing this. So therefore, I'm going to ask you a question about the Mojave plant. Has the deal been closed yet, that's your knowledge? Yes or no?
No, I don't know. My area is DWP's energy efficiency programs, and I am not familiar with the status...
You don't know anything about Mojave at all?
I don't know the status of the sale of Mojave.
Okay, but you did try to sell it. I mean, you recommended... The DWP recommended that we sell Mojave, is that correct?
It was part of the DWP's Integrated Resource Plan that was approved by council, I believe.
No, the catastrophe was told to do it, and now the cost of energy has gone up so high that everybody wants to offer 20 percent. I mean, there was one no vote on that. My question is, can we cancel that deal? Why don't you find out for us and get back to me?
Yeah, why don't you do that, because we need to do the energy efficiency stuff, so we'll have them find out.
Get back to us, because if we can save that for the people of the City of Los Angeles, and sell off that excess energy to the state or wherever, we're in a better position. I can tell you that, if you don't know it, I mean, you should know it, because you're over there at DWP. Some things you choose to know, and some things you choose to know. In any case, that's part you don't know. But in any case, no, on my time, Mr....
I know, on your time, keep going. You have another minute and 25 seconds.
Well, I'm going to...
Who was that no vote? Who was that no vote?
That was Nate Holden.
Okay.
Oh, because I just did the right thing. It was clear to me that it was a wrong thing to sell Mojave on.
Who did the right thing?
All right.
That's okay.
Let's not use up his minute and 11 seconds.
Who did the right thing? Who did the right thing?
Holden.
Mr. Holden, are you...
But that's okay.
We're going to get you the information on the status of the sale.
Just a minute. Shhh. Now, what I want to say is that, just try to help us out, get the information, and I'll yield the rest of my time to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, I'm sure I'll have to pay for it somehow. All right, I believe that brings us to the end of the discussion. We are now ready to vote, all these many years after the original motion, to adopt item number one. If you are ready to go, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that's approved, and that brings us...
Councilmembers, excuse me, councilmembers, right here.
Oh, there you are, sorry.
Hi, I'm Regina Adams with the Department of General Services. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. With this program, there are a few things that we need to let you know about that has to occur in a budget each year. With this program, which, since we're going to be generating savings in the water and electricity fund, those savings have to be placed in the water and electricity fund every year in the budget process, so that we can continue to make the loan payments back to DWP. So that was one item that's not in the report, and we wanted to make sure that was brought to your attention.
Yes, clearly, we are going to have to make the payments back, or we're going to be in a lot of trouble. Go ahead.
Right, and also, just to let you know, that of course, with the fluctuations in the economy, there may be years where we may have issues with making the loan payments, because the savings may not come in as to where we may think they are going to, and that will have to be addressed at that time.
All right, let me just mention, because we did already vote on the item, there actually is a motion floating around, listed as an amending motion, that I believe incorporates all of these points that...
I just wanted to make sure that we're aware.
I think that's very wise to do that, but I think we've got them all in this motion, and so, of course, I forgot to take note of the amending motion, so perhaps we should vote on this again. And so let's, unless there's any objection, let's reconsider item one, and you have before you somewhere in your pile of papers, amending motion, which outlines not only the... recommends adoption of the original report, plus the additional points that have been and are in the process of being brought to our attention. So if you're ready, we'll vote on item one as amended. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. All right, forthwith on that, please. That brings us to item two on the special meeting. We do have somebody who's asked to be heard. Kevin Finney, Coalition for Clean Air.
I'll be brief. I just want to say that, on behalf of the Coalition for Clean Air and several other members of the organizations in the environmental community, we strongly support the council moving forward with 10 percent green power purchase at this time. We've submitted written comments that we faxed to your offices yesterday about the Climate Action Plan, which I understand you'll be considering Friday. The one proviso we do on the green power issue is that we hope you will set a goal of trying to reach a level of at least 25 percent green power by 2010, but we strongly support the motion to move ahead with the 10 percent today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. We have DWP staff before us, if we have any further questions, or you have anything else that you feel compelled to tell us, otherwise, I'm going to open the roll. Why don't we... Ah, Ms. Chick, you'll have a chance.
Certainly, I'm in support of the concept here, and think it's a great idea. What I do have some concern with is the lack of financial analysis, and I would like to ask, and I don't know the timeline of my colleague who has a busy Budget and Finance Committee, but I'd like this to go to Budget and Finance Committee, give the CAO and the CLA an opportunity to do the fiscal analysis of this report that is missing, because I can't vote on something that isn't more clear in terms of where the dollars are coming from, how many dollars, et cetera.
All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I think this is, in part, subsumed by the Climate Action Plan, and Ms. Chick, that's scheduled for Friday, in which there's a detail of the fiscal implications and impacts. This is a piece of that, it was scheduled to be ahead of it, but all of that work has already been done, and I would request, then, that members of the council be afforded a copy of those analyses, as they have been requested, but this is a piece of a larger plan.
So are you saying that it doesn't need to go to Budget and Finance?
I'm saying the work that you are requesting has already been done, that analysis, as a part of the overall Climate Action Plan that's been in formation for a couple of years.
All right, Mr. Fuhr is next, and then we'll see if we have to go in.
Especially because the work has been done. Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton, can... I mean, I'm happy to have this moved very fast to the Budget Committee. Can that information be made available to the Budget Committee, say, for next week's regular scheduled meeting?
Let me just point out that this has been in the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee, and both Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka declined to give us a written report. They did come to committee, they sent representatives to committee, who expressed appropriate concern about how we would pay for this. The argument, as you know, for investing, for anybody investing in green power, is that you save it back.
In the long run.
And the work has been done by DWP, among others, to work out for us how much we can pay, how fast it would take to amortize it. What they told us in committee was that we were looking at roughly a $2 million investment for the 10 percent, and that that's part of the reason it's only 10 percent in the recommendation. I was alone at the committee by the time we finished the committee meeting, and so this comes to you as a recommendation of the chair, with the understanding that we are going to have to find front money to do it, but we are asking everybody else in the city to participate in this program, and if we're not willing to save our own money, we have a problem.
No, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. I guess my point was, our colleague requested that it go to Budget, my point was, I'd like to have it, if it's going to happen that way, move with great speed, so we can effectuate this. I was asking whether the city staff dealing with this could do it so quickly that I could actually have it back in council next Friday.
Well, they'll probably tell you what they told me.
All right, Mr. Fujioka, Mr. Deaton, what's the word? My question is, can I hear this in Budget as soon as next Wednesday with analyses from your respective offices?
Yes.
Okay? Great, then that will be what happens.
All right, never mind, all right. Mr. Hernandez. Never mind.
You know, there's some mysticism to this green power stuff, and particularly with the, from the perspective of the consumers. How is it that other municipalities have made decisions to purchase 100 percent of their power, green power, like Oakland?
Our program is unique in the fact...
Okay, go on, go on. Our program is unique, in fact, that...
Angelina Galitzba, Department of Water and Power, our program is unique, that our green is new green. It is technologies that have been developed, and renewable resources that have been developed as a result of the residents of Los Angeles purchasing green power. Cities have been able to commit to 100 percent green, but it's mostly existing green energy. So it's basically repackaging existing hydropower that is relatively cheap, and actually, selling that as 100 percent green makes no difference in the air quality whatsoever. Our program focuses on making sure that we do have an impact on the environment.
And do we also have hydropower that we're repackaging?
No, we do not have hydropower that we are repackaging, our resources and new resources by the definition that was established when the program entered into place.
Right. Now, the reason I'm asking these kinds of questions, and I just want to put it in perspective, and I can appreciate, I think goals are important, because we, as a city, have things a little bit different. You know, you mentioned to me earlier the Cool Schools program, and you asked me if I went to Placencia and I've seen the changes, and I also saw the Cool Schools program at 10th Street Elementary School, and I saw it at, I guess, Magnolia Elementary School. But do you know how many elementary schools I have in my district?
There's a total of 800 LAUs.
800 LAU, so the 800, how many have we done?
Our program has to move in coordination with Prop B repaving, so we work...
Right, but the point I'm trying to make is, we tend to highlight...
We've done 50 schools.
The exceptions, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we get to the rule? And it's because, as a region, and again, the city being what it is, and us having our own Department of Energy, and basically going through the whole process of energy conservation today, it has to become more of a citywide perspective, and not just the exceptions. And I'm going to support this motion that's before us today, because I think it's headed in that direction, but the department needs to understand that when they're giving us those exceptions, what happens to me is, I have like 20 different schools asking me for your program.
We know.
And it's because I have three, and I should have every school asking for the same program, and we should have a program developed that's going to be inclusive of every school in the district. And I understand the Prop B stuff, but then how do we deal with the schools who aren't getting Prop B funding? And we should be coming up with those kinds of plans as a city, and I just, again, I will be supporting this, because it's headed in that direction, but I'm looking for a more inclusive-type program, and trying to figure out what have to be the policies that we have to develop in order to do that.
We have to start somewhere. Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I came in a little late, because I was at a LAFCO meeting until now, but I'm not sure I understand exactly what is before us, but I will tell you this, obviously, we want to seek to improve our sources of power, but what troubles me a little bit is the 10 percent front-end loaded, and how that's going to be passed on. If that means that's going to be passed on to the ratepayers, then I'm going to have some serious objections to that method of doing it, because I can tell you that in all the years that I've been here, and they're adding up, I've seen some increases, but I've never seen a decrease, or an increase given back. And with that having been said, I hope that somebody can enlighten me as to what this program does, and how you're going to pay the $2 million upfront, and how you're going to reflect that, and maybe somebody can tell me why the department can't fund this $2 million from some of the money they're making from selling power to other agencies right now.
Somebody want to respond to that? Randy or Angelina?
Yes, this program is a voluntary program that was established by an ordinance, and the program calls for a voluntary commitment for Los Angeles' customers of the Department of Water and Power. It is an extremely popular program, started in 1999. 75,000 people have voluntarily stepped up to pay a little bit more on their bill in order to ensure that cleaner resources do come to Los Angeles. So we have a community that is widely supporting this program. The City of Los Angeles will also be participating in this program. The commitment will be about between 1.5 and $2 million. However, we're confident that...
That's a good city.
Correct, correct. We are confident that with even cultural changes in terms of energy use, and very definitely participation on behalf of the Department of Water and Power, we will be able to achieve savings for the city that far exceed the cost of new green power that is going to be purchased by the city.
Why can't you tell me why you can't fund that money upfront from the proceeds that you're making from selling power to other agencies right now?
Well, actually, the last time we had that discussion here, they were explaining to us that they're not selling at market rate to the State of California, they're selling at cost plus essentially an administrative fee. So that would explain it. If they want to sell at market rate, then they'll have plenty of money.
$2 million, probably.
Yeah, let's not have that debate again. Randy, did you want to...
Yes, Randy Howard, manager of Commercial Services. The approximate $1.5 million additional expense to the city to purchase 10 percent green, we believe the city itself, with a few minor initiatives, can reduce their bill enough that they could cover that additional expenditure. That would just be a reduction of 3.6 percent of their existing consumption, and this includes all city departments that are currently not purchasing green power. The Department of Airports has made a very large commitment, 10 percent, and they're going up to 50 percent within 10 years to purchase renewable energy as part of their portfolio.
And because this is a volun...
Ms. Chick, sorry.
I hope, colleagues, that we are just taking a pause, especially since we saw we so easily took a six-year pause on the other item before us. This is a pause of one week, to come back with information that simply explains to us how we are going to finance this. Because in reading this report that I believe I just got this morning, it looks as though ORES had recommended that there was a possibility of developing and negotiating with the city a program similar to that that DWP has with our Department of Airports, in terms of a long-term agreement on how to pay for this. And then, there's a discussion on the top paragraph of the overshoot about the CLA agreeing with the ORES recommendation relative to obtaining a 5 percent discount pursuant to the long-term contract ordinance. So it doesn't make sense to vote on this today, when we can have it back from Budget and Finance with further details from ORES and CLA, so that we know that we're not only doing something good in terms... doing something good in terms of energy conservation and cleaner energy, but also that we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way.
All right, I'm going to ask Mr. Howard to respond as he responded in committee when this same issue came up at the Commerce Committee.
Thank you.
I have a motion asking for—
I know you do, and I'm running the meeting, I'm asking him to give you the information. You said you wanted. I want you to have the information.
I wanted it to come—
You wanted it to come from the CLA and ORS, so we don't have to vote on it today. Mr. Howard, would you like to make your statement? Not on Ms. Chick's time.
Thank you. The long-term contract ordinance that allowed for the 5 percent of the airports, the criteria under the ordinance passed by this council was that the revenue had to exceed the cost by at least the 5 percent in order for them to receive the discount. As well, when we were offering those contracts to the selected customers, we were looking at long-term retention because of the possibility of opening up for direct access. That no longer seems to be a possibility, and there's probably not a good reason for the department to enter into that long-term contract, nor does the rest of the city qualify under that criteria as established in that ordinance. As stated yesterday, the department is still trying to move forward with a potential 5 percent rate reduction, January 1, 2002, as set forth in our action plan. If we go forward with that, that will more than pay for the additional increase in costs related to the 10 percent renewable purchase.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, as I indicated earlier, the entirety of this subject is a part of a more comprehensive attempt to deal with the reduction of air pollutants, as well as to maximize energy efficiency and conservation. The Environmental Affairs Department recently completed and released a report that deals specifically with that, and a task force was empaneled. They have worked for several months, and that report is in circulation as we speak. The matter, that is, the CAP, Climate Action Plan to which I'm referring, is before us on Friday. This item is part and parcel of that overall effort. The CAP calls for a review and analysis of every dimension of the elements that are recommended and proposed, and I want to restate that this is one of those elements. If we were to adopt the CAP as has been recommended for Friday, we will automatically have the appropriate fiscal reviews and analyses that we deem appropriate, which I am fully in support of. I therefore take this opportunity to say that this is a very, very important initiative that is being proposed regarding green power. It ought to be viewed in light of the overall effort that we are attempting to accomplish, and when doing so, I think we will have a better basis on which to determine that the $2 million or the specific amounts under consideration might in fact be quite prudent. I think it is difficult to do so absent that overall perspective, and I think staff should come prepared to address those things when it returns to council on Friday. And with that, Madam President, I would so move.
Let me be clear what you're moving. Are you moving that this be continued to Friday to be considered with the other? All right, Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I just want to respond a little bit to Ms. Chick's motion, because I agree with everything Mr. Ridley-Thomas said, is there's a greater issue here that has to be looked at, but this issue should move forward. I think that when we talk about the financing, you know, one of the things that's frustrating to me is, we let the departments set certain priorities that also impact policies, and it's because they believe that that's how they should function, and it might not be what we believe should be the best policy. And I'll give you an example. DWP, no matter how we look at it, is making a profit in the sale of energy, not the excess energy, but selling energy to other entities at this time. And they have decided that all that profit, and it's to the tune of a billion-plus, it's going to be to the tune of a billion-plus, should go to debt reduction, debt reduction. Now, I'm just trying to put it in the perspective of this $2 million we're talking about, but they set that priority already. And when we just talked about a $10 million loan to the city, that priority basically says, it cannot come from the profits of monies being used for debt reduction. I mean, that was part of the previous agreement. So debt reduction has become a strong focus, and I agree with it. I do agree with it, but when I passed the ordinance dealing with the program and the plan for debt reduction, I did not have this windfall of revenue coming in that we have both boosted about in regards to our sales of energies, and I basically had not gone as far as I've gone. And so we've been doing a lot of work towards debt reduction, we've been accelerating it because of what's going on right now, and meanwhile, we have these other issues still pending, and nobody's really putting that in perspective. I'm just trying to say, because right now, we're talking about $2 million, and in the previous action, we talked about $10 million, and DWP is definitely making more of a surplus profit than anticipated this year, more than those $12 million. And we were not allowed, as a policymakers, to deal with the issue of those priorities, because it is at times like this that we could be talking about a long-term program, not just for our ratepayers, which are our constituents, but also for our ratepayers who are taxpayers, which is what we use to maintain our buildings and the environment that we're talking about. I'm just trying to put it in that perspective, so I think that Ms. Chick's motion should come in. She, there should be a motion to review the entire priority of how we're spending things, and basically what these programs are. But what I'm arguing is, we're getting little bits, we're getting crumbs, and we're discussing them right now, when there's a big cake out there that nobody's really looking at, and nobody wants us to look at. I just want to explain that, because this is the time when maybe a piece of that cake could go towards the environment, and a piece of that cake could go to efficiency, and we should be setting a role model for the rest of our constituents, because that's what we're asking them to do in their homes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fuhrer.
I was going to move the question.
You have, can move the question. Everybody who wants to speak has spoken at least twice.
I just wanted to point of order, then?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas is recommending that we hold this item until Friday, and reconsider it at that time as part of the bigger package. The bigger package is requiring fiscal analysis. So the fiscal analysis I'm asking for before we vote on this and go forward with it will be done as part of what you're bringing in on Friday?
Yes, and this is the report that indicates such, it's in circulation, as I indicated, but the matter itself is before us on Friday.
Okay.
And if it doesn't satisfactorily do so, that's an opportunity to do it.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion and hold it in abeyance until Friday, and approve Mr. Ridley-Thomas's request.
Well, I think that, thank you. Yeah, I think that what we're talking about, then, is continuing this item, just so everybody's clear on this. Mr. Ridley-Thomas's motion is to continue this to Friday and take it up at the same time as we discuss the Climate Action Plan. Ms. Chick appropriately reserves the right, at that time, if the information's inadequate, to ask then that it, this piece go to Budget and Finance. So is everybody comfortable with that? If I hear no objections, I will deem that motion adopted, which is that this is continued until Friday. Continuing it till Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's all, that's all that's before us at the moment, is continuing it till Friday. If we need a vote, we can open the roll on that, open the roll on continuing it till Friday, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now it's clean, it's continued till Friday. Thank you all. We will now adjourn the special meeting and go back to our regular meeting, where we have left just public comment, the housekeeping, and the closed session. So this is the time for comments from the public on items not on today's agenda, but within the council's purview, and we'll hear first from Leonard Rose Jr., and then Melrose Larry Green.
My name is Leonard Rose Jr., I live in City Lotte Platte. I'd like to tell you about what happened on Channel 11 News on 10 o'clock last Saturday, and they're showing that gangs, you know, with stocking on their head, and they have guns, you know, and they have drugs, and we need to help these young people, somebody is brainwashing these children in gangs and drugs and sex, and this is on movies and theaters and video games they have in theaters, violence and sex, and they're getting these ideals, and cartoons, so like Bart Simpson vanishes, you know, spraying walls, you know? We see that defeaty all over Pasadena and Los Angeles, and things are happening, it's getting worse, and this hate crime is rising up, and some getting out prison in County Hill, and they're going to start doing all over again, and hate crime is going to rise up, and we need to do something to get more police officers to stop the fighting, to stop the feeding, get tougher on law, and more stricter on law. And I got good news here, Vicki Outreach, Sunday, you'll meet George Bush and Lee Baca, and Bill Clinton, George Bush, and this, what they think about the Vicki Outreach, they help trouble youth like any gangs in the background, they want to see two people, and they bring peace in our city, and let's say, we're here in the drugs. We've been able to reach out over 25,000 addition through our program, with over 70 who complained the program remaining drug-free. Our hearts rejoice at the way God is moving in through the medicine of Vicki Outreach worldwide. For example, beginning in East Los Angeles, over 35 years ago, this medicine had come being international, known for turning lives around from the social destruction into life of hope. And I got a paper that City Hall need to get police and county and schools to join together, and I make public speeches three years, go aboard a supervisor, school, and they wrote me, thank you, you know, make our city better.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rose. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. Now, I want to refer you all to today's Daily News. This is February 28th editorial called "The Cost of Settling." And I just want to, it reflects that there's a billion dollars of liabilities, not a million, a billion, that's a thousand million, if I'm not mistaken, on the city's balance sheet, $1 billion, according to City Controller Rick Tuttle. Of that $1 billion, just think of all that $1 billion could buy, more cops, after-school programs, pothole-free streets, but because LA, and this is a quote from today's Daily News, "LA has a city council," that's you folks, "that would rather throw your money at its problems than solve them, that 10-figure price tag won't pay for any more city services. City Hall's continual neglect of the LAPD," this is from today's Daily News, "in hopes that the federal government will do the job instead," that's consent decree, "will only lead to more lawsuits and settlements down the road. The same goes for the city's crumbling sidewalks. The council is paralyzed by the question of who is responsible for sidewalk repair. My sidewalks on Las Palmas are a disaster." And as a result, that's not in the editorial, "And as a result, the city pays millions of dollars each year settling trip-and-fall lawsuits. Doesn't help that City Attorney James Hahn and the council have shown more interest in reaching quick settlements than in fighting even the most frivolous lawsuits. Ambulance-chasing lawyers know that LA is quick to roll over, and that suing it is an easy way to make a quick buck. Your money is a small price to pay for city leaders to get the litigators off their back." Then they talk about $100 million in workman's comp claims, and the Rampart scandal is $125 million, that's a billion dollars. So the lesson of the Tuttle Report is that, one, that LA can no longer afford to ignore, City Hall can't duck its responsibilities forever. Sooner or later, the bills come due, and we all end up paying. In the remainder of my time, I want to indicate to all of you that I will be seeing my good friend Bill Burke and his wife, Yvonne Rotherworth Burke, Sunday, as I run the LA Marathon. I hope all of you council members will run with me. I will run the whole 26 miles, although I'm not in good shape, but I will run. And the last thing I want to say is, I know most of you are Democrats, but why don't you and the mayor get together and invite President Bush to City Hall, to City Council? State your case to the president, because Mayor Philadelphia was sitting next to Laura Bush last night, mayor, president's going to be going to Philadelphia real soon, and I know all of you need money for your districts and for the city. Why don't you invite President Bush down here, because whether you like it or not, he's your president for the next four years. Thank you, I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That closes the public comment period, and I believe we're now ready to go into closed session for item 22, item 23 we've disposed of. So we're going to be clearing the room. If you're not involved in the closed sessions, please plan on departing. And while we're doing that, Madam Clerk, let's do the housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
That clears the desk for closed session.
All right.
We're back on, Madam Clerk. Item number 22A is settlement, excuse, in the amount of $145,000 for a workers' compensation case, Eddie Jones versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that, please. And?
And 22B is settlement in the case of Felipe Campos versus the city, and it's a workers' compensation case, and the amount of that settlement is $150,000.
All right, open the roll on that one, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is also approved, and forthwith on that.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Would everybody please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I sadly ask that we adjourn in the memory of John W. DeWitt. Many of us know his son, who worked with us on economic development projects from the mayor's office, but his father passed away on February 24th. They're having a memorial service for him on Saturday, March 3, at Simmon and Julie Catholic Church in Huntington Beach, and they're asking that, in lieu of flowers, the family kindly request a memorial donation to me to assist the development of a small lakeside veterans park up by Big Bear Park. Checks can be sent to the Veterans Park Fund account, and I have the information in my office, if anybody would like to do that. But again, John, his son works with us, and he's lost his father, and I ask that we adjourn in his name.
Anybody else? Call and roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. See you all on Friday.